Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Irvin. I'm the drama teacher and theater director at Chaparral High School. We were invited here tonight to perform a couple of numbers from our upcoming musical, Jesus Christ Superstar. It is the biggest, most intense musical we have done so far, and we're happy to be here to perform for you. So, without further ado, this is the cast of Jesus Christ Superstar.
Don't you mind about the future? Don't you try to think ahead? Save tomorrow for tomorrow. Think about today instead. Oh, yeah. I could give you facts and figures. I could give you plans and forecasts. Even tell you where I'm going. Why should you want to know? Why are you obsessed with fighting? Times and fates you can't defy. If you knew the path we're riding, you'd understand it less than I. Let me try to cool down your face a bit. Mary, ooh, that is good. While you prattle through your supper, where and when and who and how? She alone has tried to give me what I need right here and now. Seems to me as strange and mystifying that a man like you can waste his time on women of her kind. Yes, I can understand that she amuses, but to let her stroke you, kiss your hair, is hardly in your line. It's not that I object to her profession, but she doesn't fit in well with what you teach and say. It doesn't help us if you're inconsistent. They only need a small excuse to throw us all away. Who are you to criticize her? Who are you to displace her? Leave her, leave her. Let her be now. Leave her, leave her. See to clean now. If your slate is clean, then you can throw stones. If your slate is not, then leave her alone. I'm amazed that those like you can be so shallow, thick and slow. There is not a man among you who knows or cares if I come or go. I believe in you and God, so tell me that I'm saved. She will try with you, trust me, trust me, Jesus. I told more, you need to convince you that you've paid it and you're easily struck as the filth from Rome who raped our country and who teary eyes our people for the love. Do you know I love you? Did you see our ways? I believe in you and God, so tell me that I'm saved. Do you know I love you? Did you see our ways? I believe in you and God, so tell me that I'm saved. There must be over fifty thousand screaming love and more for you. And everyone of fifty thousand would do whatever you ask them to. Keep them yelling their devotion, but at a touch of hated wrong. You will rise to a greater power. We will win ourselves home. You'll get the power and the glory forever and ever and ever. You'll get the power and the glory forever and ever and ever. You'll get the power and the glory forever and ever and ever. You'll get the power and the glory forever and ever and ever. You'll get the power and the glory forever and ever and ever. Amen.
Thank you. And they are doing that musical, Jesus Christ Superstar. So, thank you. That was fabulous. And with that, I would like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. You have to settle down now. We have for our invocation this evening Pastor Clark Van Wick of Cavalry Chapel Bible Fellowship. I saw you rocking out in the back of the room.
You did a great job. I mean, fantastic.
So, yes. So, if you will stand with me for the invocation, and then we'll have the flag salute by Council Member Nigar.
Lord, it is with a great joy that we come here tonight. Lord, asking for your hand of blessing upon our elected officials, our appointed officials, these men and women that you've raised up, that you've called to be put in a place of authority and leadership in our great city. And, Lord, we just pray for wisdom and discernment, that you would just lead, guide and direct them, that they would not only be able to minister to the many, but also to the few. And, Lord, that each and every decision they make would be done with justice and righteousness. So, lead, guide and direct them, and continue to bless this great city in which we live. And we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen.
Thank you. If you would face the flag with me and say with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Could we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Calmaturo?
Here.
Nigar?
I'm here, and Mr. Washington is here, too.
Roberts?
Here.
Washington?
I'm an inspiration to him. What can I say?
Mayor Edwards.
Here. Thank you. We have some terrific presentations this evening, and I see a lot of apparent sportspeople in the room. So, you must be the Valley Pop Warner Golden Grizzlies, and you have achieved something remarkable going all the way to the championships at the national level, right? So, we have certificates for each one of you, and as you're coming up, Councilmember Ed- Edwards, Councilmember Washington is going to come down and present you with some special certificates. So, when we call your name, you're going to walk up, he's going to shake your hand, and then after you get your certificate and your handshake, then I want you to come and line up right in front of the dais, okay? So, there are so many of you. Temecula Valley Pop Warner Golden Grizzlies. So, we have CJ Barney. We have Cole Condon. Dominic Diaz. Mason Fox. Hayden Glenn. Joey Hurst. Brennan Jackson. Cody Jones. And Sean Jones. Jack Lamb. Dash Licata. Trevor McNabb. Thomas Miller. Aiden Moore. Daniel Morales. Shawn Sanchez. Dylan Segman. Andrew Torres. And Cade Webster. We also have, we also have Christian Ross and Peyton White, who could not be here this evening, but let's give them a hand. And then we have head coach Mike Barney. And the assistant coaches, Tony Sanchez. Jeff Barney. Todd Condon. Eric McNabb. Dan Licata. Dan Lamb. Art Torres. And we've saved the best for last, the team mom. I can just read this, just to give you an idea, and this is, this is for CJ. This happens to have CJ's name on it. "We join with the citizens of the, of the city of Temecula in congratulating CJ, all of you, really, all of you, on your outstanding accomplishments and efforts with Temecula Valley Pop Warner's Junior Midget Team, the Golden Grizzlies. The Golden Grizzlies are the first and only Temecula Valley Pop Warner team in eighteen years to make it to the national championships and are one of eight teams in the United States to compete in the Florida Pop Warner Super Bowl competition. The Temecula Valley Pop Warner Golden Grizzlies finished their season by holding the victory titles, two-time Palomar Conference champions, West Con Regional champions, and third in the nation in the national playoffs." So, we're so proud of you. And, and it's going to be tough to get a picture, so if anybody has a wide lens, this is, this is your opportunity. Coach, literally, can I give you one minute to just go up to the microphone and just say something? Because this is a remarkable accomplishment. Coach Mike Barney. One minute now.
I'll give, yeah, it'll be quick. I'll give you thirty seconds. Now, I'm just very proud of these boys. They worked really hard. A lot of them been on this team for as much as early as one year, as far back as nine years, and they all worked very hard together as a team and played very well together and fought and battled all the way through the season and made it all the way to the Super Bowl, which no, no team in Temecula has done. So, I'm just proud of the work they've done and looking forward to seeing them play in high school.
We are very, very proud of all of you. You've taken Temecula with you and broadcast our name in a very, very positive way, so thank you. And congratulations. Now, on to high school.
Yep.
And congratulations, coach and parents.
Thank you.
It's a huge accomplishment, parents. Lots of games in the cold and rain, and, well, not a lot of rain this year, but lots of games out in the cold, lots of nights away from home, evenings and practices, and to keep up with your schoolwork, too. It's an amazing accomplishment. Congratulations. We, we like to honor those who work with and serve the city, so I have the honor of presenting a service award. This is the five-year service award to Mr. Gary Watts. Gary Watts. Here he comes. Can you cry, my friend? Want to say anything just for a second? Not?
Good job.
Thank you, Gary. And then we have a presentation that we have waited, I think I can honestly say, years to hear from Darlene Wetton. Not necessarily from her to hear, but we are so happy to have Temecula Valley Hospital open and doing so well. And I got a tour, I don't think about a month ago, and it is spectacular. Darlene is the CEO of the hospital, so welcome, and what is going on?
Hey, there's a lot going on. Thank you.
All right.
So, this is not Darlene Wetton's hospital as the CEO. This is your hospital, and it gives me a lot of pleasure to be able to share the exciting things that have been happening since I was here a little over a year ago. So, we opened on October fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen, and what an exciting day it was to be able to bring the hospital to the community. We opened with flag ceremonies. We had a celebration in front of the hospital where we raised the American flag, the California flag, and of course, our own colors. We brought all the employees out in front of the hospital and said the Pledge of Allegiance on that first day. It was incredible how we were welcomed as we opened up the monument signs out on Temecula Parkway, to the sounds of cars driving by waving and honking.
Yeah.
With excitement that first day when we opened up the emergency room to many needed citizens. Our incredible, amazing staff, we've hired staff from all over this county and other counties, very talented, true to our culture of being patient-centered and very compassionate. And we were at the ready. We had brought in months of equipment and training and supplies in order to get ready for that first day, to be able to launch our services and have all the support that we needed to do that. We brought in over a hundred volunteers to help us with that opening day and help with all the tours that we've had throughout the community. This was also a wonderful time to bring in individuals throughout tours to see the warm, welcoming environment that we've been able to provide. And talk about being embraced. It was amazing, the reception from all of our neighbors. We had lots of gifts, lots of free things for our employees. It was a really fun time to be tremendously welcomed. Girl Scouts came in for tours, other individuals in the community, and then, of course, we had our ribbon-cutting ceremony with the six different chambers, who all came together on that day, and it's a little tough to cut through six different ribbons, let me, let me tell you, but it was a lot of fun. Our first ninety days, over six thousand emergency room visits, over five hundred and eighteen admissions, surgeries, cardiac procedures, endoscopies, we've been extremely busy, much busier than we anticipated.
We tried to tell you.
I know, just wasn't listening. Septicemia, gallbladder stroke, chest pain, a lot of different disorders that we've already received care for, been able to service the healthcare needs, predominantly from this service area, about a fifteen-mile circumference around the hospital, as well as out of the service area, about a hundred and thirty-five admissions. We're very proud of being patient-centered and family-sensitive. We've started what we call something to brag about, and so, all the messages we receive, emails, Facebook, phone calls, we put them out to our employees, so everyone's able to share all the positive comments about the compassionate care that we provide. Our emergency department is amazing. It's very large, all private rooms. We've partnered with city police, fire, ambulance services to be able to bring in all the healthcare needs of this area and the surrounding areas to meet our amazing physicians and incredible staff. We've been impacted by tourism. Twenty-six percent of our visits have been from out-of-area. A lot of pachanga, the wineries, people coming from other areas, other countries even, have come into our emergency room already. Surgery services has also been very busy. We've performed orthopedic surgery, general surgery, vascular surgery, plastic surgery, had a real special, I think, going on gallbladders for a while. We were doing about three a day.
Oh, my gosh.
So, over a hundred surgeries thus far performed in our operating rooms. Now that we are Medicare-certified, we've also begun to provide elective outpatient surgery. Our reputation's very important to us, and we have a reputation of compassion, which I'm very proud of, and that goes to our culture and how we train our employees. Our innovation has been described as aligning with major medical centers across the country. We have all the highest levels of technology in our nuclear medicine programs, MRI, CT, all the technology in the laboratory and throughout the hospital. We truly have begun to make a difference in the services that we provide and how we provide them, predominantly through our employees. Trust is very important in a hospital. Introducing spiritual care providers, pet therapy, volunteer services, and you can see from the photos here what a difference it's made to the patients that we have. We've partnered with UCSD, with Jacob's House, other healthcare providers in the area to make sure that we're meeting all the needs in order to expand our services even further. And we look forward to being able to provide open-heart surgery in the very near future and to begin our community outreach for health awareness in areas like the Temecula Valley Heart Walk and Women's Heart Health Awareness, as we introduce more community services out to this area. I want to stop for a minute here and read a letter to you that I received just last week that really emphasizes the difference that I believe that we've made. Dear Ms. Wetton, On December thirtieth, I was having a sharp pain in the middle of my chest. I knew I was having a heart attack because I had experienced this pain before and had a history of three pyre attacks. We live fairly close to Temecula Valley Hospital, so my wife drove me to the emergency room. Within a few minutes after my arrival, I went into full cardiac arrest. Nurse Grange, excuse me, Dr. Grange, Nurse Jamie, and the rest of the staff who cared for me successfully revived me within a minute after my heart stopped. Nurse Jamie continued to provide me with necessary care. Her decision to do so was life-saving. I went into cardiac arrest two more times, and each time, she successfully revived me. The doctor who attended me found a hundred percent blockage in my heart vessels. I can never express enough words, my gratitude to Dr. Grange, Nurse Jamie, and the rest of your staff, who played a role in saving my life, not just once that evening, but three times. After the incident, I have come to learn how serious my heart attack was. I have been told this type of heart attack is nicknamed the widow maker, and less than twenty percent of people who go into cardiac arrest successfully are revived. I am truly a lucky man to have survived my ordeal, but luck was only a small part of it. If it were not for your dedicated, highly-trained and skilled professionals, I would not be here today. I don't remember much of the evening after I went into cardiac arrest the first time, but I will never forget two images that mean the most to me. Dr. Grange's smiling face, looking at me after I was revived the first time, and seeing Nurse Jamie's face each time she revived me. I'm sure your humble staff thought this was just another day in the office for most of them, but if it were not for them, I would not be able to spend another day in my office. As corny as this may sound, when I close my eyes and imagine what an angel looks like, I see Nurse Jamie. When I imagine what a superhero looks like, I see Dr. Grange's smiling face speaking these unforgettable words, "We brought you back." Thank you so much for all you have done.
Wow.
Pretty wonderful to get those kind of stories.
Yeah.
So, thank you all for your trust in letting us provide healthcare to this community.
Well, thank you. We are so happy to have you here, and I think we can all say, that's one of those cases that, you know, if we didn't have a hospital, who knows what might have happened.
Exactly.
So, thank God you're here now, and we're looking forward to partnering with you on Go Red for Women Day.
Yep.
So, and anything we can do to help the hospital and to help the residents.
Thank you.
Thank you, darling.
Thank you.
Bye. So, we can move on to public comments. Do we have a request to speak?
We have one request to speak.
All right. So, we'll go ahead and read this. A total of thirty minutes is provided so members of the public may address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or city council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. All right. Mr. Reer, how old are you?
I'm doing fine. Haven't seen you in a couple of days.
Yes.
My name's Chuck Reer. My, one of my biggest gripes, if when I was a kid, more years ago than I even want to admit, I was taught to ride my bicycle on the street opposing traffic. Today, they put bicycle lanes in with the traffic, but there's nothing more alarming to be walking down the street or down the sidewalk and have some kid come whistling by you on a bicycle, and it scares the smell right out of you. And that's my main complaint. The other is people can have trash can three feet away, and they'll throw the trash right on the ground, and you, you people walk around and look, there is so much trash on the streets, it's alarming. Any comments? Thank you, people.
Thank you, Mr. Reer. Council members, any comments this evening? City council report? None? Wow. All right. Then, moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number one, standard ordinance and resolution adoption procedure. Number two, action minutes. Number three, list of demands. Number four, First Amendment to Agreement for Police Motorcycle Repair and Maintenance. Number five, approval of the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen-fifteen Temecula Valley Tourism Business Improvement District, TVTBID. Annual report and levy of an assessment against lodging businesses within the TVTBID for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen-fifteen. Number six, special tax consulting services. Number seven, two thousand and fourteen workers' compensation coverage annual renewal. Number eight, sponsorship agreement with the Rotary Club of Temecula for the Taste of the World event, March twenty-first, two thousand and fourteen, at the request of Council Member Washington. Number nine, acceleration of AB two-seven-six's appropriation from fiscal year two thousand and fourteen-fifteen for Temecula Park and Ride, PW zero-six dash zero-nine. Number ten, acceptance of improvements and notice of completion for Fire Station eighty-four roof replacement, PW thirteen zero-one. Any comments? Anybody want to pull? Anybody want to pull? Mr. Washington?
Madam Mayor, I would like to pull item number eight for a brief comment, I don't need a staff report, and I wanted to ask Rotary Club President Kim Keller to come up.
All right.
For a minute or two.
So, pulling number eight, do you want to go ahead and vote the balance and get that out of the way?
It's for me.
Okay, motion and a second to move the balance, all in favor, oh, I guess we're going to cast our votes, huh?
Sure.
Okay.
Or I can say aye.
We may have to. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now, we'll move on to item number eight, sponsorship agreement with the Rotary Club of Temecula for Taste of the World Event, March 21st, 2014.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Are you wearing your pin, Mr. Washington?
I am.
All right, just checking.
But don't ask me the four-way test.
Yeah.
Because then I'll be in trouble. I'm a member of the Rotary Club of Temecula, have been probably since around 2001 or so, but the club actually predates cityhood, it's been here for some time. For years, their main fundraising event, which resulted in many dollars coming back to the community by way of scholarships, et cetera, was the triathlon about three years ago, four years ago. Rotary started a new event, Taste of the World, and again, a lot of that money that they raised comes back to the community. So, I asked Kim Keller and her able assistants, Julie and Walt, to come in, share a folder that the club has, and speak briefly about the event, and I told them that you might have to do some arm twisting, because this is a real hard-nosed council.
Yeah.
Doesn't like to support nonprofits in the community, but they might make an exception tonight, huh? So, could I get President Kim Keller to come up?
And in full disclosure, I am also a member of the Rotary Club of Temecula.
I was going to mention that, in fact. Our mayor is a Rotarian as well. The rest of you should also be. I do want to say thank you so much to the council, and to Councilmember Chuck Washington for offering to be a sponsor of Rotary Taste of the World this year. It is our fourth annual event. Let me see this on the screen.
There's a little square on the table there.
On the table, and you see the little outline?
Yeah, right inside there.
There you go.
Then it'll show up.
Hey, very nice. It is March 21st at South Coast Winery Resort, Pachanga is our presenting sponsor this year, but we're very happy to have the city's marketing power behind our event. It is a great showcase of the community, we have eighteen to twenty restaurants that'll be featuring their international cuisine, local wineries, local craft breweries, international entertainment from local performers, so it's a lot of fun, it's a great event, March 21st on that Friday, and thank you so much for your unexpected support, we're delighted to have you onboard.
And some of the local, what do you do for the community? Tell what some of the local projects are, there's so many.
Yes, there's quite a bit, and this is our number-one fundraiser, so it raises all the money for everything that we do. We are big scholarship givers in the community, we'll give out, at least this year, ten thousand dollars in high school scholarships. We will spend almost ten thousand dollars on military support in the community for military families that are somewhat needy. We do holiday food baskets, again, we work with other nonprofits, we get names of families that need support over the holidays. We did over five hundred dinners and baskets and gifts for about four hundred and fifty children this year over the holidays, and there's quite a few other local projects like that, bicycles, as you know, for the Boys and Girls Club, and then we have some international projects that we work on, we work with other Rotary Clubs overseas to help bring clean water and child, improve child nutrition with some other foreigners. So, we believe in a world approach.
And since the inception of Rotary and Rotary International, Rotary has worked with the World Health Federation, and for all intents and purposes, has eliminated polio from the face of the earth.
That's right, just about, it's no longer endemic, there's only three countries where there's any incidence of polio, and that did start by Rotary in 1985, and now that we have the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation behind it, so they're hoping to completely eradicate the disease within the next five years.
Billions of doses have been given by volunteer Rotarians throughout the world.
Yes.
And they go everywhere, from the most remote jungles, to the middle of the desert, to the mountains, everywhere.
Yes, they do, and that's something that our club actively financially supports as well.
Thank you, Kim, thank you, Rotarians.
Yes, thank you.
Right?
I'd like to move approval of the sponsorship agreement for Rotary Club of Temecula.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? So, we'll cast our votes, are we voice voting?
No.
No, we're doing.
Ron and I are voting.
I'm not. I got nothing. Nothing. Aye. All right, so you cast your votes?
We did.
We did? We can have a voice vote anyway, all in favor?
Aye.
I think we're good, there it is. All right, congratulations, thank you. Thank you for everything you do for our community. All right, so I'm going to recess this meeting to the scheduled meeting of the Temecula Community Service District and the infirmed President Comatiero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. I am somewhat infirm tonight, but I'm here and I'm alive, and I'm grateful for that, so forgive me if I sound a little different. Let the record show that we are all present tonight, do we have any public comment under this portion?
We have no public comments.
Thank you, then we'll dispense with that portion. Under consent calendar, we have three items, number eleven, approval of the action minutes of January fourteenth, item twelve, sponsorship agreement with Safe Alternatives for Everyone, Inc., and item thirteen, special tax consulting services.
Move approval of consent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Washington, a second by Mrs. Edwards.
I still have no button, no, I have no button.
Okay, well, we'll take a voice vote, as we did before, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Don't say aye.
That motion carries. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes, sir.
Report for us tonight?
Just a quick one, thank you, Mr. President, just a quick reminder that after a busy holiday season, Family Fun Night is returning to the CRC on Friday, February seventh, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Come out and test your hand at art, dance, cooking, and so many other fun classes and programs for the entire family. I'm also happy to report that the City of Temecula Youth Musical Theater presented six sold-out performances this past weekend. A hundred and five of Temecula's talented youth ages six to eighteen entertained over twenty-one hundred patrons at the Old Town Temecula Community Theater. And speaking of the theater, and as we witnessed earlier, Temecula is also the heart of arts and culture. And the California Parks and Recreation Society, CPRS, has again selected the City of Temecula with its Award of Excellence for the 2013-2014 Old Town Community Theater Season, and I quote from CPRS, "You should be proud that your project met the highest standards for achieving excellence." Thank you, President Comatiero and directors, for your endless support, and Tobea, Erica, Bill, and the outstanding theater team, bravo for your continued excellence. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin.
Good job.
It's awfully nice to hear, but I think we all would concur that we don't need for CPRS to tell us how proud we are of the work that you and your department does, so congratulations to all of you. Do we have a general manager's report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, I'm struggling. Any directors' reports?
Nope.
Move adjournment.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, any objection? They'll stand adjourned.
All right, since we have no successor agency, Temecula Housing Authority Meeting or Public Financing Authority Meeting, we will move on, and I am reconvening the Temecula City Council, we're going on to a public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the City Council before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. So, we are at item fourteen, Long Range Planning Project, number LR 12-0012, a statutory update of the City of Temecula General Plan Housing Element. And, we have staff report, please.
Thank you, Mary, thank you, Mayor Edwards, and council members. The Housing Element is a chapter of the city's general plan, which addresses local and regional housing needs. It responds to the housing needs determined by the Southern California Association of Governments and Western Riverside Council of Governments. In the past, housing elements were updated every five years, but recent changes to state law now require housing elements, or allow housing elements, to be updated every eight The City of Temecula adopted its original housing element in 1993, it conducted its first update in 2002, a comprehensive general plan update was completed in 2005, another update was completed in 2010, and the current housing element update is for an eight-year period between 2014 and 2021. City of Temecula staff kicked off the Housing Element Project in July of 2012, conducted a public workshop to solicit public input in December of 2012. We provided an initial draft to the State Department of Housing and Community Development in March of 2013. The state provided informal comments back to us in April, and staff revised the inventory and submitted a, or, and draft document, and submitted again in September, and received a conditional compliance letter in November stating that the City of Temecula's draft document was indeed in compliance with the statutory requirements of state housing law. Several components that go into a housing element, a housing element contains an analysis of housing needs, including demographics, updated housing characteristics, and analysis of potential constraints, including environmental, infrastructure, governmental, and inventory and evaluation of vacant lands to accommodate the RENA, goals and policies to guide housing programs, and an eight-year implementation plan. So, what is Regional Housing Assessment? It's a plan prepared by the regional agencies that assigns projected housing unit needs by income segments. Household income segments are broke down into these five categories. These income categories are determined by the percentage of household income in relationship to the area medium income. Currently, the area medium income is sixty-five thousand for a four-person household. The city is, so what is Temecula, what is Temecula's regional housing need? The city needed to plan for one thousand four hundred and ninety-three new housing units for all people within the community. Temecula's eight-year allocation is distributed among these five standard categories, and units must be provided for lower-income, moderate, and above-moderate income levels. In order to meet the city's RENA, the city had to identify suitable sites for all fourteen hundred units, but specifically identify sites with appropriate zoning and density to accommodate housing for lower-income families. The city's affordable housing needs, also referred to as the remaining need, was determined to be two thousand and seven units, I'm sorry, two thousand and seven units, of which was thirteen hundred were carried over from the fourth cycle update, and six hundred and twenty-six were projected for the fifth cycle update. The remaining need has to be met on sites that allow for affordable housing by right, and fifty percent, approximately one thousand of these units, will be accommodated on sites, allowing exclusively residential uses where no commercial or mixed-use development is To ensure the city could meet its RENA, an evaluation of the vacant parcels was conducted. Fifty-two parcels permitting thirty dwelling units per acre were identified as land that could potentially develop with affordable housing. At thirty dwelling units per acre, the total site capacity for these parcels was approximately two, twenty-one hundred dwelling units. Based on this analysis, the city was able to demonstrate that its RENA obligation could be met on the vacant sites, on the vacant sites allowing for the affordable housing, this is also referred to the affordable housing overlay area. Upon certification of the Housing Element Update by HCD, five zoning code amendments will be required of the city in order to completely comply with state housing law. The Housing Element is committed to providing housing opportunities for all income segments within the community. In order to provide for the housing opportunities determined by the land analysis, the city will need to amend the zoning code to formalize existing provisions. This is merely a recodification of existing provisions in a form of an overlay zone, which will allow for affordable housing at a minimum of twenty dwelling units and a maximum of thirty dwelling units. The amendment will also clarify additional incentives available for affordable housing developers, including fast-tracking of project proposals and greater flexibility with development Second, the zoning code currently addresses state mandated density bonus law in Section 1710-020. A development code amendment is required to clarify and codify the already applicable state mandated density bonuses and incentives or concessions provided to affordable housing developers. Density bonuses are calculated using a base percentage of the project units, and it's up to a maximum of thirty-five percent. The city currently permits for emergency shelters, but it does not contain specific development standards for this use. Staff will draft development standards consistent with government code. These development standards would provide provisions for maximum bed, off-street parking, security lighting, on-street man, onsite management, and others. The Housing Element also commits to removing any potential government constraints that may affect the opportunity to provide for a variety of housing. Consistent with SB 2, the city shall treat transitional and supportive housing the same as any other residential use allowed in that zone, and, and allow for these housing types within all residential zones. New legislation has requested that local jurisdictions address employee housing as it relates to agricultural uses. Staff will review the zoning code for the necessary amendments, if applicable, in order to strata, in order to satisfy the requirements of state law as it relates to employee housing and agricultural uses within our area. Lastly, I'd just like to talk a little bit about the benefits of a certified housing element. A certified housing element ensures that we have a legally adequate general plan. It allows, it provides the city with priority funding for state grant opportunities, including the housing-related parks grant, which the city just applied for. It allows the city to be compliant with state housing law and avoid any penalties in subsequent housing element cycles, for instance, having to update in four years versus eight years. Staff prepared an initial study in accordance with CEQA, and determined that there was no environmental impact related to this policy document, a negative declaration was prepared. Staff noticed a thirty-day public comment review period, and two comment letters were This item was heard at the Planning Commission on January fifteenth, 2014, and the Planning Commission recommended City Council approval. Staff recommends the City Council adopt the Housing Element Update and approve the negative declaration tonight. This concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, any questions? No, Mr. Washington, so just to clarify, we are conforming to state law, so that we are in compliance?
Yes.
Correct, that's what this is, and we don't build affordable housing, but we are required by law to make provisions for others who will come in and build housing of all types in the city?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so just, I just wanted to clarify that, so then, since it is a public hearing, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, did we have any comments?
We have no comments.
All right, does anyone wish to speak on this public hearing item? All you high schoolers in the audience? Going, going, all right then, we are going to close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion, and Peter, do we need to read, or do you need to read anything?
No, this is a resolution, so it does not need to be read.
All right.
Remove Resolution 14.1, or Item 14.
Okay, have a motion and a second, please cast your votes. Please cast your votes. All right, thank you, gentlemen. It passes unanimously. Moving on to city council business, item number 15, Tract Map 23103-2, located at the northwest corner of Shemene Clenay and Butterfield Stage Road. Item 15 is the approval of the final subdivision map and subdivision improvement agreement for Tract 23103-2 at the northwest corner of Butterfield Stage Road and Shemene Clenay. Mr. City Attorney, I believe you have some preliminary matters to speak about?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. Across Butterfield Stage Road from this tract is the Europa Vineyard Estates tract. Council members Comachero, Nigar, and Washington do not have any direct ownership or investment interest in Europa Vineyard Estates. Each of them do, however, have investments and interest in other projects in which the managing member of the limited liability company owning these projects, Mr. Dan Stevenson of RandCon, is also the managing member of the LLC that owns and will develop the Europa Vineyard Estates project. Because of the common managing member, the Political Reform Act and the Fair Political Practices Commission regulations provide that for conflict of interest purposes, council members Comachero, Nigar, and Washington have an economic interest in the Europa Vineyard Estates project. Councilmember Comachero is also the president of the RandCon Group and is responsible for the development of RandCon projects, and will receive income over the course of the year from other RandCon projects sold to the merchant builder, Lennar Homes. Councilmember Nigar has also provided consulting services for certain RandCon projects. Normally, the approval of a final subdivision map is a ministerial action. This means that the council must approve the final subdivision map if it substantially conforms to the conditions of the approved tentative map, and the council cannot change the conditions of approval of the tentative map. In this case, the tentative map for Tract 23103-2 was approved in July 2005, and the layout of the tract and the required road improvements to Butterfield Stage Road were approved at that time. No changes to the layout of the tract or to the Butterfield Stage Road improvements that were approved in 2005 are proposed to be made at this time. The fact that this item involves the approval of a subdivision improvement agreement and surety bonds, however, makes it a discretionary action, even though almost every subdivision in Riverside County requires a subdivision improvement in surety bonds to secure the public improvements. Therefore, the conflict of interest rules apply to this action. Europa Vineyard Estates is within 500 feet of Tract 23103-2, and some of the improvements to Butterfield Stage Road required by the county of Riverside for that tract are also required of Tract 23103-2. A state law requires that a quorum of the city council be present to conduct business. A quorum is three members of the city council. In this case, three members cannot participate in this manner. Under these circumstances, the FPPC regulations allow for one of the disqualified members to be randomly selected to participate in order to make the required quorum. I requested an advice letter from the Fair Political Practices Commission. The advice letter confirms this analysis and is attached to the staff report. The city clerk will make the random selection of one member to participate in the consideration of this item. The process she will follow, as described in the staff report, is a process that has been approved by the FPPC. Once the random selection is made, the council member chosen will be the council member designated for all council actions required for this tract. The final map and the subdivision improvement agreements are usually the last step in the process, but it is likely that there may be a further action involving the acceptance of the public improvements. The only other thing that I'd like to mention is that it was a somewhat lengthy explanation of this, but the FPPC regulations do require that that be made orally at the time this is made.
I have placed the names of council members Comachero, and Washington onto equal-sized pieces of paper. I have uniformly folded these paper... pieces of paper, so they are equal in size and that the names are not visible. I have placed these in this clear bowl. When the mayor calls me to the podium, I will then draw one piece of paper with the name of the council member who will participate on this item.
Madam Mayor, at this time, it would be appropriate to call upon members of the public who have requested to speak on the random selection process. Once the random selection process is made, but not before, members of the public would be able to speak on the final map and the subdivision improvement agreements.
All right. Do we have any speaker slips for anyone who wants to speak on the random selection process?
One speaker on this item.
All right.
But not the selection process? I don't believe so.
Okay, so Peter, we can move on, then?
Yes.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I have one question.
Mr. Roberts.
A procedural question. Do you need three yes votes, or can you do two and one?
We need three members to constitute the quorum. That's why one is being selected to being brought back. But with the three members selected, this can be approved with two affirmative votes.
Okay.
So if the vote is two to one, or two votes in favor and one abstention, it would pass.
I understand. Thank you.
All right, so three participating, and all we need is a majority?
Correct.
Okay.
And point of order, if I may...
Mr. Nigar.
Madam Mayor, whoever signed up to speak, can we inquire to make sure they want to speak on the agenda item or the selection process? And the only reason is, I want the... it to be as pure as possible. The agenda item is rather innocuous?
Yes.
And typically would not have any speakers for it, so I just want to be certain.
All right, can you call the speaker and see? Mr. Hall, is this the agenda item, or is it the process?
Process.
Oh, good. Come up, then. Very good.
My name is Wayne Hall. I was born in Riverside County. I went to... No, I went to Sherman, but my daughters and sons go to Temecula Valley High School. Yay.[1337.46][1337.46](LAUGHING).
Go Bears. Okay, go ahead.
Exactly. I wholeheartedly support the way that the city... the city clerk... I'm sorry, the city attorney and the way we've done this. This is not our first time we've had to do this, and as a member of the Tea Party Express, which is over 800,000 people of California, I have no problems whatsoever with this... the way we're doing it. And it's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Might I add?[1365.65][1365.65](APPLAUSE). Okay, go Pumas and go Wolf Pack. Yeah, there you go. All right. So will the city clerk now proceed to the podium and make the random selection?
Flip a coin. It's the short stick.
The councilmember Comachero will be participating in the vote, and we need councilmembers Nigar and Washington to step out of the room. Thank you.
Better come back.
Until item 15 is completed...
We'll be back.
And as soon as they leave the room... I noticed you're taking all your accoutrements with you.
Yeah.
Does this mean you're not coming back?
Probably.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Chuck stays, I'll stay.
As soon as they... As soon as they leave the room, Mr. Attar is going to give us a staff report.
Need to make sure I have everything.
Waiting on you, Mr. Nigar.
Hold on. Okay.
Have a good one. All right, Mayor. Ready.
Okay. Mayor Edwards, member of the city council, good evening. Tonight, we are recommending that you take the following three actions. One, approve Tract Map 23103-2 in conformance with the conditions of approval. That's the property outlined in blue to the left side of the exhibit before you. Two, approve the subdivision improvement agreement for Butterfield Stage Improvement and in-tract improvements, and accept the faithful performance bond and the labor and material bond as security for the agreement. And the third action is to approve the subdivision monument agreement and accept the subdivision monument bond as security for the agreement. This tract map proposes to subdivide an 18.26 acres property into 37 single-family residential lots. The property covered by this map is located at the northwest corner of Shemene Clenay and Butterfield Stage Road. The recorded title interest for this property belongs to Lennar Homes of California. For historical reference, on July 26, 2005, the city council approved tentative tract map number 23102-2 for three years. Subsequently, several extensions were processed, extending the life of the tentative map to July 26, 2014. The developer has elected to post separate subdivision improvement agreements and bonds for the Butterfield Stage Road improvements and the in-tract improvement. As such, the developer is obligated to execute the subdivision improvement agreements and the subdivision monument agreement and to post the required securities. At this point, the developer has met the terms of the conditions of approvals for map recordation, and this map is in conformance with the approved tentative tract map. The approval of a subdivision map, which substantially complies with the approved tentative map, is mandatory ministerial act under state law. In a related matter, at the January 14, 2014 city council meeting, Temecula resident Mr. Wayne Hall requested that the city consider adding a left-turn pocket on northbound Butterfield Stage Road at Shemene Clenay, which leads to Chardonnay Hills and the southern entrance to the development. At the meeting, Mayor Edwards requested that staff look into this matter. Staff reviewed current conditions in the field after the implementation of the street improvements and found that the suggested left-turn pocket would enhance the operation of the intersection. Staff also determined that the width of Butterfield Stage Road at this location would accommodate the left-turn pocket. Staff is working with the developer to implement the addition of the left-turn pocket at this time. This concludes my report, and I'm available for any question you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Will this be the Wayne Hall left-turn pocket?
Possibly.[1695.83][1695.83](LAUGHING).
We'll call it the hallway.
The hallway. Oh, my gosh. So, Mr. City Attorney, can we take this with one vote? Just item 15?
Yes, it would just be a motion to approve the recommended actions.
Okay, so I will accept a motion to...
I'll make that motion.
Move item 15, and I will second. And please cast your votes. And it is three to two, with two members abstaining. How do we say that, Peter? One...
It's...
Good as nothing.
The vote is two yes, one abstain, and two members not present.
Okay, just not present. Okay. So there you have it. That's item number 15.
And that is... Oh.
Yeah, so it passes.
Correct.
We have approval. Item number 16, Community Development Department Monthly Report, anything?
These are just receive and file, Madam Mayor.
All of receive and file. And city manager, you have anything for us?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Peter, anything?
I have nothing tonight.
All right, then I will accept a motion to adjourn. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we stand adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.